Okay, I'm calling to order the September 26th Board of Education meeting. Glad you're all here.
Glad you're here.
Thank you. We don't have a public audience tonight.
Whoa.
So we are going to move right on to Board and Administrative Communications. Let's start with Dylan.
Hi, I hope everyone's having a great Monday and Tuesday so far to start off the week. Last week, or last time we met, I spoke about the Run Back to School 5K that Lyra Marlane was hosting, and it was very successful. It had close to 200 participants, which is great. And Mr. Luzetti, I heard, was in the top five, which is awesome.
There be.
He ran in high school.
Also, many of the elementary schools had successful lockdown drills, and they went very smoothly. Toon Hills also announced that they'll be working with Project Outreach again. And in this program, the students in grades four to six make sandwiches in the cafeteria and bring them to the Immacare Shelter in Hartford. And they've been doing this program for 30 years this year. And any donations would be greatly appreciated to help this fundraiser run. At the middle school, the Community Service Club is in the process of sponsoring a fundraiser to help the victims of recent hurricanes in the southeastern states. They are also, oh, sorry, they also held an assembly with the Anti-Defamation League titled Step Up, which addressed the discrimination and bullying issues for teenagers, and they promoted the importance of being a positive image in their community. At the high school, they formed the Trojan Hall of Fame to induct the many alumni that were fantastic athletes in their high school careers. And also at the high school, last Friday, we had our first home game for football, and the student section showed a very much, or a great amount of support and school spirit to help welcome the team into a great season.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Tom?
Thank you.
Jeff? Lydia?
Yes, I just attended the CRAK meeting the other day and the K board director's meeting last night. And at that meeting, Diana Wentzall, Commissioner and State Board were there, and also with two of the lobbyists for KAB and CRAK. And unfortunately, I wish I could report on some more happy news, but, you know, coming from their, from their words, and also our fellow board members around the table representing different districts around the state, things are, things are tough. We need to be bracing, if we haven't already, for what is about to come. It's inevitable that the executive order will be signed, and I wish I had better adjectives that they explained last night, but it, it does not look like a good picture for any of us. And the one thing that several board members had around the table, had talked about, was that we, in light of the budget woes that we're all facing within the districts and what we have to do, we still have to remember of the good things that we do as districts, you know, not only in our district but around the state. And we don't applaud ourselves enough of the, of the fine things that we do within our schools, within our classrooms, within our districts, within our staff. And even though we are at a dismal point of the budget, you know, there is the bright side that we do the best we can, and we're going to continue to do it. So that's the legislative update where we are now. I wish I could be a little bit more.
Thank you.
Do you have a question about that, please? You have used the word inevitable, that executive order is going to be signed. There's still a few days between now and then.
Right.
I have an update to kind of shed a little bit of light on at least what's out there on the table when we, when we get to it, Tom, in terms of both the budget that's been approved and the executive order, just so we can see the variance of what's going on. You might have to answer some of the questions.
No. We're done.
I've shared before with the board that we have a pretty incredible program specifically at the high school, and it's called STEP, Students in Transitional Employment Program. And it's led by Bridgette Anouli and Ellen Gru, two very veteran staff in our department. And they work with local businesses to pair up students with disabilities and employers across Simsbury to learn not only the skills of whatever trade they might be interested in, but also the soft skills of how do you interact with others, what does eye contact look like and greetings look like? So it's a really all-inclusive effort. I did want to share a highlight of that this week. So there is one student who is a senior at the high school. His name is Carter. And Carter is very interested in the culinary arts and was great in about advocating for himself to be placed at some local restaurants. Well, he started placement at Antonio's, and they learned about Carter's skill set in making egg rolls. So he loves, he's devised his own recipe. It's pretty incredible. And Antonio's this week put it on the specials menu.
Oh, boy.
Carter's Egg Rolls, and they sold out this weekend. So it's just another example of certainly the partnerships that we're doing with the Simsbury community, but ways in which we support our students with disabilities in transition in very meaningful ways. So just wanted to share that with the board.
Wonderful. Neil?
Excellent. So on the personnel front, we don't have a report tonight because we hired the final certified teacher on Friday, so you'll see the exhibit tweaks from now because it, we didn't have time to get it to your board packet, but I am officially declaring hiring season closed and successful with our final hire at Henry James. The one item that we put in your folder tonight is a letter from our good friend Paul Kulikowski, who is noting for the board that this week is National Adult Education and Family Literacy Week. And for Paul, he's really focusing on the adult education part of that as our supervisor for the mandated division of adult learning through DCE. These are citizens of our town who perhaps did not earn their high school diploma and are going back for their GED, and it's an incredible service that that division. There's also some citizenship training that goes on through that division. And Paul has written a really thought-provoking letter about the importance of that work and his advocacy for it. So we draw the board's attention to that great work that Paul leads with a really talented staff, and it's probably happening as we speak over at Henry James because they are early evening classes. And finally, I wanted to update the board about something that we talked about briefly at the last meeting, talking about a capacity study that we've undergone at Henry James in terms of looking at a view of what it would take to look at including a sixth grade at Henry James, which is obviously currently designed at seventh and eighth grade. I conducted the initial meeting of that study last week. Burke Leclair attended, the two administrators from Henry James, and a really important person who's a data management person for us by the name of Cindy Heffernan. She's there because she's got an incredible mind for scheduling and how things fit into buildings. So that was an initial meeting to kind of plan the work. Mr. Leclair has reached back out to Castle Booze to talk about, they, they did the planning around the current capital project that had to pull off the table last spring around Henry James and what tweaks might have to happen as we relook at that project. So we are having a meeting later next week with, with the architects from Castle Booze to revisit that project. And then on Columbus Day week, we have set aside half a day to really look at the scheduling puzzle that it would take if you were going to put a sixth grade, with the idea mostly being that schools that have this configuration tend to look for kind of a compartmentalized sixth grade wing almost, and what that, that would take. So that work's going to happen over the next few weeks. And then I think the next step after that, from the board's point of view, and I'll talk to Mike Goman, it would be a much earlier meeting of the Facilities and Enrollment Task Force than we've had over the last few years. That meeting has tended to wait until the spring. I would see probably a November meeting so that conversation can be had before your capital planning takes place as the budget season kicks in. So it's underway. We're just beginning, but I will continue to update you through communications on that. And, you know, it's going to be a fairly expedited process, really focused on capacity of the building.
So I have two items. We have our first early release tomorrow, and teachers will be working in their buildings with their grade level teachers and/or department teachers. They're looking at data, and they're developing their year-long professional growth plans that will carry their work and focus their work over the course of the year. So all K-12 teachers and all disciplines will be working on that tomorrow afternoon. Really important work that we expect teachers to do, so that's a good thing. Tomorrow night, we have our first leadership team meeting. We've talked about rethinking school start times, so we've opted to use the venue of the SHS leadership team, but we are making it all-inclusive. It will be including middle school representation of administration, teachers, a student, an eighth grade student will participate. We have two elementary principals, Scott Baker and Beth Hennessy, that will sit on this committee. We have upwards of, close to 30 people, I believe, that will be coming to this meeting tomorrow night. Todd is part of it. Susan is part of it as well. So administration, teachers, parents, students, board reps. So it will be our kickoff meeting to talk about our vision and our work for this year. We'll report back periodically on where we stand with this.
That's good to hear. I was curious as to how we're going to have it with the high school leadership team, but it affects everybody, so I'm glad that you're.
We, we made sure we were inclusive because it does, and really, the, the outcome that we're looking to achieve by the end of the year, as we look at research, we talk to experts, we look at transportation, that we will be able to come back to you and identify the benefits and the questions that come up in this work as we rethink school start times.
Sounds great. Matt?
I'm all set. It's an evening I really look forward to when we get a chance to hear from our high school principal, and who brings our strategic planning and continuous improvement to life a little bit, so I don't have an additional report.
Great, well, let's get to that then, please.
All righty. Oh.
Oh, I'm sorry. I lied, we have to do the minutes. Before that, we will do the minutes of the regular meeting of September 12th.
I'll move to the second.
Second. All those in favor?
All right.
opposed? Thank you all very much.
I'm going to abstain since I was not here.
Excellent. Excellent. So now we are on to you. Thank you very much.
Right, excellent.
So, welcome to Andy O'Brien, the principal at Simsbury High School. This is a wonderful opportunity for us to come before the board to share with you a comprehensive report of the work that was accomplished at Simsbury High School over the course of the 1617 school year. What's really important to know is that this is as a result of their continuous improvement plan. You were able to see an annual report that Andy had prepared, and what we're doing is giving you the highlights of, of the work that have been accomplished. This also is a subset of the district's strategic plan. This is, as the district has our strategic plan of looking at academic indicators, a social-emotional, budget, high-quality teachers, this also will hit on, on many aspects of the district's strategic plan. So tonight, what we will do is we will give you an overview of the core values, beliefs, academic indicators of success, themes, a very brief budget overview. I know that's a conversation that's hard to have at this point in time, but I think we have some ideas to share with you. And then, as we move forward into the 1718 school year.
Welcome. Thank you, Ms. Murray. So we start with our core values and beliefs of preparation, passion, and personal growth. Those are things that ground all of our decisions and our planning. We are really committed to preparing our students for excellence in high school and beyond. We want to ensure that they can connect with their passions, that their teachers are passionate about what they are teaching and presenting, and that ultimately, everyone in our facility is growing, administrators, teachers, students. We're carrying on the tradition of excellence, and I'm happy to say that, Mr. Sullivan, we are picking up where you left off, right? So today was a great day because we announced and shared with our student body that we, for the second year in a row, took first place in cap science in the entire state of Connecticut. We had received our scores earlier on, but we did not know comparatively how we stacked against other districts, and it was really gratifying to see that. So I had shared that information with science teachers, and at the end of the day, I went on the PA to let the juniors know, and I told them it was more than, more than fine if they wanted to make a little noise to celebrate their accomplishment. We look at SAT, first in our district reference group in English Language Arts, second in our district reference group in math. AP, our participation rate went up two percentage points to 71%. We stayed at a strong 82% of students that take APs across grades 10 through 12, scoring three or higher. U.S. News and World Report, again, we are ranked favorably as nine in the state. And our niche rankings, they, they go for 2018, that's the way that they market this, that we were eighth in Connecticut. What was nice about this is this is not just about our standardized test and scores, but it's also student experience. Students are actually filling out their, their quality of their all aspects in learning. And then this last one, this is a really big one. We learned that we are being identified as a Special Olympics Unified Champion School. So based upon the excellence of our unified athletic program and the work that we are doing with our students, ESPN is going to be coming. They told us when our date will be. It's on October 19th. We're going to have a school-wide pep rally-type event to really shine a spotlight on all the amazing things that we do with our students in all of our unified programs, not just our athletics.
So as we look at the academics indicators of success, as I said, we really want to make sure that we are monitoring progress, student progress over time, and connecting that to our district's strategic plan. So tonight, we're going to talk through, Andy will talk you through, the cap science, advanced placement, SAT, post-secondary plans, and then other indicators of success in regard to STEM, the arts, and world language.
So you will see that we do have a great school. Our academic markers are very strong. We had already received in March, earlier this year, our Next Generation Accountability Report. That is the new measure that the state uses across 12 different data points to compare schools across the state, regardless of what district reference group you are in, and we had a favorable report there. With NIASC, when they came, they left us with only 29 recommendations. They asked our permission to be used as an exemplar for other schools that will be using the electronic portal. And our niche report again, so these are just a flyover to say that we do have a great school. When we look closer at our cap scores here, just for comparison purposes, within our district reference group, we know we topped the state, but this shows against our, our similar schools, just how we fared. For advanced placement, we could see that our number of tests taken and the percentage of students that scored three or higher, still very strong. And then the number of students that are electing to take at least one AP before graduation. So we're looking at our senior data, hoping that our students will challenge themselves and consider taking at least one or more. And again, we had gone up to 71% from 69.
I happened to be at a conference, a meeting on Friday, and four different colleges from Connecticut, UConn, Andy was with me as well, UConn, Fairfield, Eastern, and Central. And they did talk about the, the quality of courses that kids are taking. And so we're really pleased to be able to say we're maintaining, you know, over 70% of our kids taking at least one AP course before graduating from high school.
Here's our Connecticut SAT Test Day numbers to show our average scores in math and ELA. Again, we led our DURG in many respects, and then you can see how we stack up against the state average. Here, if we again look closer at our numbers, very strong in English Language Arts, 93% of our students at or above goal. In math, again, a good showing, we were second in our district reference group with 77.2% of our students at or above goal. This is interesting now because our work really, we discuss this as a faculty, the achievement gap is really the new frontier for us. We are able to take the vast majority of our students and, and ensure that they are college and career-ready through our standardized testing and through our other measures. But this is something that all, all districts grapple with. What was really impressive is when we compared our success rate with, between our regular ed population and our high-needs population, so that would be our special ed, our free-and-reduced lunch, and our English language learners, we could see how we compared, and the size of our gap is relatively small in comparison to the other schools that we normally look at. What else is interesting here is the state average there. We are actually below the state average, which is of special interest as we look forward. It'll be interesting to see how that fares, but that is a very good marker. So this is the difference between our average for our regular, our general ed population and our high-needs population. So the gap is not gone, but our gap is significantly smaller than similar districts. And here, we can see the difference in math as well. Again, below the state average and, and ahead of many of the similar districts that we have. We look at post-secondary plans, very solid percentage of students that are pursuing four-year colleges, still solid at 85%. We had slightly more students that elected to go for two-year programs. The bottom figure was really nice to see this year. As far as I know, this is the highest percentage of students, of students that have applied to the nation's top colleges, 23% of them have actually been accepted. When we look at subscription in our different areas here, in our elective areas, you could see STEM's still strong, slightly more interest in engineering, world languages took a tick upward, and fine arts are actually moving up, are fine and applied arts. So then, looking at our school culture, this is the time that we took to process our panorama survey. This survey was administered to students, to staff members, and to parents. The areas of strength that we had when we compared all three surveys, that students and staff members definitely do feel physically safe in our building. Respect for differences has actually gone up. When we look at this, this one here, students feel that they can access support if needed. There was a question that asked if you felt that you were bullied, how difficult would it be for you to get assistance? And the number was very small. It was not very difficult at all for students to access that. When we looked at areas for growth, this was interesting. Across all three surveys, there was a desire for greater communication. So students needed to hear a bit more from their teachers, parents wanted to hear a bit more from teachers as well, and teachers wanted to hear more from administrators. So that's something we are looking at across the board, ways to open lines of communication. Sense of belonging, we know that many students are connected to different components of the school, whether it's their individual sports group or their, their performing arts affiliation, et cetera, but we need to build a greater sense of belonging to the greater school community. Student-to-student respect is something that continues to, to be there, that we see, that students would like to feel more respect, whether that's across different groups of students or, or grade levels. And then the staff members felt that while we've invested a lot of time in our new evaluation system, they would like to see more from it. They'd like to see more feedback. They'd like to feel as though this is helping them to grow. And we are talking to them actively to say, how can we make this experience better for you?
Can I ask you a question about, you want to wait until the end, or?
It's up to you. Yeah, it's up to you. Go ahead.
So I think that, I'm looking at page 17 of the, the package where it actually has the scores.
Okay.
Some of the scores dropped a lot from year over year. Did that surprise you?
Well, it was interesting, when we looked at this administration and the numbers of, of people that actually participated in this survey, we did not have a large subscription. So if we were to look at, in particular, our student survey, we, we missed a chunk of our students. So we have to look at how we administer this.
Okay.
So that we can actually dedicate time to ensure, I think, we get a bigger snapshot of that class.
Yeah, because some of the scores, like if you just looked at this year, they looked good, but they were 10 points.
Some, some did dip.
Yeah. I don't know what the year before was. I mean, did it, did they go down or did they come back down?
They went down. Yeah, I think there was, there was some, some dip, and I think those are some of the things that the administrative team and are working with their department supervisors and other leaders in the school to really say, how are we going to address these dips in this? And, you know, was it the number of people that responded to the survey? It's hard to tell because it was a very similar response, response rate across, you know, all of our panorama surveys, but it does make you stop and pause and say, you know, what was it? And they're on it. So you'll see some more.
Yeah, but we, we have a holistic plan, you'll see.
Yeah, you'll see that in a few more minutes.
These areas are not forgotten. There's work, there's work planned to address that.
Okay, thanks.
So if we look at the culture work that was done this past year, we had our interest approach to our SHS Connect. We included seniors in that group. That went well. We're continuing with that moving forward. We had the Pay It Forward Initiative, which was really nice with our, our Trojan Code, where students could elect to pay their ticket forward, and that was matched dollar for ticket. So we had over $500 donated to our local food pantry. We had our school improvement projects. The main lobby trophy cases have been completed. So we have won the Tradition of Excellence, shows the history of Simsbury High School. It's beautiful. If you haven't seen it yet, I'd encourage you to take a look at it. Shows the different buildings over time and some real iconic photos and artifacts. And then the trophy case to the right, where we take a look at our, our great achievements over time. We are posting our National Merit Scholar finalists. We are having our team captains posted for each of our sport seasons, and our student athletes, and our officers for our different honor societies.
That was something that came out of the, one of the leadership groups.
Yeah.
Yes, it was.
Hall of Fame, you heard Dylan reference that. We'll be inducting our first class in January of this year. We're looking forward to that. There's a number of activities to generate support for that as well in the community. We did unveil Troy, our Trojan mascot, and he was actually present at our last football game, was included in the cheerleaders' routine.
So he's new this year, I was wondering.
Oh, he, actually, we had him last year. He just, but he's continuing to be there. A little, yeah, towards the, the middle of last year. The courtyard is up and open, and we did have a speaker last year that really promoted the idea of thinking before you post. And this is something we will continue to do and work with because the power of technology and it's, all too often, things can be posted before people have a chance to think of what the ramifications could be.
Andrew, I just had a question about the Athletic Hall of Fame, which is an exciting project, and I, I know it's been a long time coming, but it has occurred to me more than once, as we've talked about that program, which didn't exist before, is to, whether or not there's an opportunity to have other halls of fame for accomplishment other than athletic accomplishment. I don't, I don't know if, if other schools do this or not, but I know that over at Central Connecticut State University on the campus, they're doing a wonderful thing on the campus in that they, they're, they're putting, they're putting like flags on, on some of the light poles in the center of the campus, and they're permanent. And they, they have the name and the year of alumni, of CCSU, and what positions they've achieved. And it's really inspirational to see the, the accomplishments of CCSU graduates, and they're not athletic accomplishments, but they're still very valuable. And so I'm just wondering if there would be any, any interest going forward in having some other parallel Hall of Fame?
I know there, yeah, there's, there's opportunity for that. I have heard of other schools doing that before. We know of graduates that have gone on to do really amazing things.
Yeah.
At Simsbury Scholars, we had, you know, our graduate that came back.
And I think it was discussed a little bit, I mean, this is a concept that's been floating around for years in terms of trying to get it off the ground, and should it be more comprehensive or should it be just athletics? And I think, you know, an effort to get this off the ground, see where we go, how we do, and have those conversations, I think people would be open to them. I know that our old high school, Cheshire High School, has a Hall of Fame that's athletics and other folks that have gone on to accomplish different things, and it's, it's a balance. So I think there's a myriad of ways to look at it.
This is a great first step in recognition.
Also, the leadership team that came up with the Hall of Fame, part of that conversation, we did talk about the different hallways in the school and each department showcasing their awards that the kids can strive for and achieve.
Yeah.
So there is definitely a shift to bringing those awards more prominent and more recognition throughout the building.
Okay, I just want to throw that out, maybe someday, we could get it on our agenda someday.
So moving forward, we will be implementing our two- and five-year plans for those 29 recommendations that we do have. We don't foresee that this is going to be incredibly budget-intensive at this point. Our work that we're doing this year will be completing our formative assessment work and looking for that in practice. We will be engaged in our work around identifying the portrait of the graduate. That's important work that we have. I know many of us will be participating in that. A number of our recommendations go to our 21st century learning expectations, which essentially are the vision of the graduate. So while we have 21st century learning expectations, it's appropriate now to take a look at those to say, do we, do we have this common understanding that that would represent our vision so that we can align the rest of the district and then write our goals and then move forward to do that other work. Upgrading the athletic facilities, I think, is very important over time. We'll see how that fits in and complements the other work that we would like to do if, should we go to a later opening when we talk about student stress and coordinating activities and other things. There's a significant amount of difficulty right now because of the limited facilities that we have that causes us to have to schedule practice times and access over a substantial amount of time. Next steps with achievement gap. Next steps with achievement gap, that is a significant piece of our work, and we're going to be looking to data, working closely with data, our teachers and their PLCs, adjusting curriculum and instructional strategies, and then leveraging the power of peer observation. That will continue, although we are allowing departments to have more sovereignty in the structure of that, so it's in support of the work that they're doing, whether it is writing curriculum, or whether it is building their program in other areas. So our doors are open, and many of them are very comfortable now observing cross-curricula and across-grade levels. Mid- and end-of-year assessments, this was a strong recommendation from our student stress survey last year, so all of our teachers are developing mid- and end-of-year assessments that will be rolled out this year. And then, looking at those school start times, because the research is, is very compelling, the benefits, both mental and physical, and also academic achievement, and safety for your community as well. So we were able to take that work and put them into three main buckets this year. So we, the three main focus areas that we have are student achievement, teamwork, and staff, and student wellness. So if we look at student achievement, that's, that is going to include our assessment work for the year. The following four areas that you see there, the achievement gap reduction, improved attendance, physical fitness, and access to the arts, that comes from the next-generation accountability report card that we had from fifteen, sixteen, that those were areas, really the final areas, that we needed to focus on to ensure that we would be actually considered among the highest, most successful schools in the state. And I believe we're on the cusp of that. We look at teamwork, this is really where we took a very close look at our survey data around communication, communicating up and down the chain, from administration to teachers throughout our building, through the community. The shared passion piece, very important, not losing sight of that. And especially when we look at meaningful growth and innovation around evaluation and the growth plans of staff members, it's key to us that they are finding passion in the work that they're doing, their plan connects with that, and they can share that. And then, sharing leadership. Department supervisors are working within their departments to identify who are the next leaders within their department that they can foster and come along and share that work with. Staff and student wellness, that sense of belonging, building that. And that's something we have been working at. We have, the Go Trojans slogan is something you'll hear often when people are speaking, you'll see it displayed on shirts that staff members are wearing. Every Friday, teachers are wearing spirited gear to build that unified sense of belonging. And we see that with our sports teams as well. Building supportive relationships, teachers in their professional growth plans will be focusing on ways to make deeper and stronger connections with the students in their classrooms. In the past, they'd used SHS Connect as a vehicle, but when we look at the ability for them to impact the most students, it's really on a day-to-day level in their classrooms with the students that they see every day. United by our differences, we have a diversity committee that was formed, and this diversity committee is made up of staff members. We'll be looking for student participation as well, and ways to celebrate and, and build an understanding that our strength really lies in our differences, and celebrating that. And then, equipped to persevere, ensuring that everybody has those, those characteristics of resilience that allows us to continue to move on, to bring our best, despite whatever pressures we might encounter. You talked at the beginning of this meeting about our budgetary concerns and other things. We will persevere through that, okay? We will find ways to move on, to bring our best, to ensure that our students have a quality learning experience, and that, that we, we make the most of all the things that we are fortunate enough to have. And then, finally, the school schedule. Looking at that as a way, again, that touches so many other aspects of the work that we do. Ultimately, we believe that we can become an even better school than we are. So as strong as our, as our academic markers are, we believe that this can be a place where all students achieve at high levels, so that speaks to our achievement gap work. Here, a great place to work for our staff members, but also for our students, where our culture indicators match the high academic markers. So that's right there in our vision, that we did notice that there were some dips within our panorama survey data, and we value that. We want to ensure that people are having a positive experience when they're with us. And then, ultimately, I believe that we will serve as a model school that other professionals look to for growth and innovation. And it's interesting, because I have been contacted already two times this week from other districts that are interested in finding out, what is it that we do, specifically in the area of science, and also in general, in our, with our student population that allows us to be so successful.
Great. Questions?
Yes, please. First, I just want to go into the packet first that we received, which is not as comprehensive as this truly excellent presentation you just gave us. Really comprehensive and easy to follow. I'm looking at, there's a chart that shows this number one, and I think that was, was an early chart in the presentation showing Simsbury, number one percent at above, grade seventy-four point six percent. That's a science chart, is that correct?
Yeah.
Is that the scientists?
Yes.
Okay, I was looking on, I hadn't seen that one, I was looking at this, and I was looking on page nineteen of the packet that we were given, and it shows a three-year history that shows a kind of a precipitous drop from fourteen, fifteen, sixteen to seventeen on two of the three lines there, and I, I just wondered.
In science.
In science, yeah. And does that mean that everybody went off a cliff?
Oh, yeah.
Yes. They embargoed these results for a very long time. The test was taking, taken electronically for the first time?
It was for the first time electronically.
The results came out, we had our results in isolation, and did the same thing you're doing right now, and went, ooh.
Yeah.
We picked, I picked up the phone, I called various districts.
Really?
We didn't know until Thursday, this past Thursday, how other districts had done.
So there was a significant, for whatever reason, the makeup of the test, the electronic format, whatever it was.
Really?
Affected everybody. Affected everybody, but by scale, we're positioned at the top like we were last year, but it is score-to-score, very different.
So as of right now, we can't look at trend data?
This test is phasing out.
This is the last, that was the last year.
There won't be anymore.
There won't be, that test is done.
Okay. Just a few more.
Good pickup, Tom.
That is.
Tom, while you're looking, Jeff had a question.
Oh, just on the, the school survey and the respect for others, and bear with me, I took stats in grad school and still have nightmares, but.
What page are you on?
I'm on page seventeen, and I guess the two that I find fascinating is, so students in this school respect differences in other students. Went up from forty point two percent last year to fifty-three percent this year. Great, you know, fantastic. But then you look at the next one, and it says, how much respect do students at your school show you? And it goes down, right? So what that's telling me is it says that, me as a student thinks that the school is large, shows respect for others, but me personally, I'm not getting the respect that I may deserve. Just fascinated, what, just interested, maybe your take, kind of what you may think maybe behind that, or?
Yeah, it seems to be conflicting, you know, I think, again, we're looking for ways to develop more unifying feelings among our school, to ensure that we have those deep connections. And so much of what we do now is about that, fostering those connections from, from student-to-student and teacher-to-student. And I do my best to be present. I greet every student every day, coming off the bus, to wish them the best. I think we have to look again at the administration of the survey, too. This is something, we need to capture a greater component of our senior class when we do this. Some students had completed this in class, some it was posted to the classroom as an assignment to be done, when you can do that. And when we look so closely at these numbers, I think, for this year, we have to ensure that we structure this, that we prepare people to take this, we say, hey, this is really important, we want you to take this time to do this, and consider these answers to these questions.
No, and if I can just, while I got the floor for a second, and you mentioned trying to make that connection with the school, I said this to you at the time, but I want others to hear this, too. Andy was at the opening picnic for the ABC House back in the end of August, and I thought that was just world-class, because talk about respect and trying to make a connection with those students, I thought that was incredibly important. So I want to thank you again in front of everybody, and especially, you know, you had a couple of kids there that are in, that are new to Simsbury, new to Simsbury High, I mean, talk, and have their principal there to greet them, to, to have a meal with them, I thought was just world-class, so just thank you again.
Thank you.
Tom?
I'll echo that as a fellow board member. Thank you for that. Yeah, this is, this is a couple of questions about achievement gap.
Okay.
And I'm looking right now at the chart that shows SAT, I don't know what the number is, it's in your presentation, SAT and KIM and JAP, achievement gap between high-needs and non-high-needs students.
Is it the ELA or the math? What are you looking at, up at the top?
SAT.
SAT, but it's right underneath it.
Oh, ELA.
ELA, that's what I have up here, okay.
I just want to be sure I understand the metrics, and then I want to go to a question. So there's a red bar there that shows a ninety-two. What is, what does that ninety-two mean?
That's the difference between our average for our general population and our high-needs population.
SAT.
In ELA.
It's the SAT score, the difference between their scores.
Got it, thank you. So related to that, I am just wondering if there is any trend data that we can look at, that will see how that gap has been trending in recent years? This is sort of an absolute snapshot here.
Correct.
Of sixteen, seventeen. Is that gap getting smaller, getting larger, or is it stable?
So we've only had this assessment, this is the new assessment, two years of it. So when I, when we did this current year, it prompted me to go back and take a look. And there were exactly the same in the ELA. We, we didn't close, you know, it's ninety-two and ninety-four were the differences. And in math, for Simsbury, we were, last year, we at a hundred, and we're at a hundred and six this year. So, you know, again, we don't, this is just one snapshot of what we're trying to figure out. There's other pieces of evidence that we're going to pull together to try to figure out this gap issue, but this is one way, after two years of this administration, we said, let's look at the, the difference between the average score of the regular students and of the high, the high-needs, which is, yeah.
Okay, so, so we only have two, two data points.
Two, two years of this.
Which are similar.
One of them is probably no statistical difference, the other one might be statistically significant.
Might be, but might not be, yeah.
Okay, that's just for information.
Yeah, yeah.
Another question on achievement gap, is that I seem to recall in, in other meetings previously, that we were looking at two achievement gaps, two different achievement gaps, metrics. One was the metric, special needs students versus general education students, which is what is included here. But I know also, we were looking at some, some demographic charts, and we were speaking in terms of achievement gaps within demographic groups in high school, and we're making, I think, a pretty significant commitment to attempting to deal with that form of an achievement gap, which is not included in this presentation, and I just wonder if you could, if you could give us some insight into that type of achievement gap.
So we're, we're interested in the performance of all students.
Yeah.
So we have, when our teachers are creating their goals for the year, and they're writing their SLOs, they are accounting for the growth of all of their students. They're, based on their baseline data, and they're dividing students into performance bands, to ensure that every performance band of students, those that are below, or at, or exceeding expectation, will continue to grow over the course of the year.
So this is a major part of the work tomorrow that teachers will be doing, is digging deep into, this is an early report?
We may have lost sight of the demographic.
No.
No, no, no.
And Tom, this, this data here is not your special ed achievement gap. So Aaron, why don't you define what high-needs actually is?
It's, high-needs is, high-needs is special ed, free and reduced, and EL students.
So you're, you have all your free and reduced lunch students in there, which is a certain demographic piece, so it's not, it's not pulled out?
I'm so sorry.
Yes.
All right, so, there are ways to isolate things even further, and we'll look specifically when Sue does her program report of the achievement gap, special education students to regular ed students.
I'm sorry, I missed.
No, that's okay.
Okay, I just have one more question, and it's on page, page thirteen of the packet that we were sent. Improvement indicator number six, highly effective teaching in every classroom, supported by highly effective instructional leaders in every school building. In most, most of these charts and presentations, there are metrics that, that we can look at. In this particular presentation, I'm not seeing any metrics, and I'm just wondering, are there metrics available to us for, to manage in terms of effectiveness and quality of classroom instruction? And if so, what do they look like?
There, there are, through the new evaluation system that was instituted five years ago, teachers are scored against performance rubrics on all areas of their teaching performance.
Yeah.
So standards such as learning environment, planning, instruction, assessment, content knowledge, and they are given a score of one, two, three, or four, with one being the lowest and four being the highest. And Ms. Wild and I just submitted Simsbury's report to the state of what that looks like, and if that's something that the board would like to see, it's actually broken down by school.
We actually will be doing that. Matt and I will, after we hear from the high school, the middle school, and the elementary report, we'll be giving you a general overview that relates to the district strategic plan as well, so, but our, our numbers, our percentages are, do well.
Our teachers, yeah, it's, most teachers in Simsbury, with three being a rating that's no, that's labeled as accomplished, and four being a label that's exemplary, that's where, you know, ninety-seven or eight percent of our teachers are between, you're looking at whether they're a three or a four.
Oh, I see.
But I can show, I can show you exactly how that breaks down.
Be tight range, then.
Yeah. So that would be.
From that, you conclude, we can conclude that we have no significant weaknesses in our instructional staff at this time. Is that correct?
We can conclude.
Except for the remaining percent.
Yeah.
Well, we also have our recommendations from our NIASC Visiting Committee, that based upon their time and our self-reflection, that there are some instructional areas that we can improve upon, that we're working on.
That's what we've been working on.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any amount of support.
Yeah.
You know, one thing on the, on the achievement gap chart, that I think kind of gets lost in the way it's presented, is that, I mean, you, you can get the difference from two different, two different parts of the, of the equation moving. So I was just trying to eyeball back and forth, who's at the, the higher end of the, of the scores for ELA, and where they fall.
Oh, when you go back and look at these other charts.
Yeah, so we're, we're at the very high end, yet we still have a smaller gap.
Right.
Some, some of the, some of the other districts have high scores and, and higher gaps.
Right.
It'd be interesting to see kind of a stacked bar to see what those absolute numbers are.
Right.
Because I, I think that that.
And in the, in the state report card, I can't remember exactly how they do it, but they, you know, that's the ratio they look at, like they do not want you a certain percentage below your overall performance. So it's all relative to your own district in terms of that growth. It's an interesting way to look at it.
Because I think there's another success point in here that gets lost.
Yeah, that's a good point, Tom.
Okay.
A scattergram. Time for a scattergram.
Love making.
We could do that.
Does anyone else have any more questions? Thank you so much.
You know, I had one, one comment to add, you know, I am, Andy, extremely excited about the, the work ahead, extremely excited to take a look at the leadership teamwork this summer. Really strong overall performance, which we've had a history of, and I think good focus points to move forward. It just reminds me how fortunate we have, we are right now at Simsbury High School, with the pathways we've worked really hard over time to create. We have students that have the ability to make choices, personalized choices about what courses they want to take, what avenues they want to pursue. It's just one of the main reasons we're as successful as we are, and we're going to have to discuss a lot of those things in, in the upcoming years, right? In terms of tough choices, how we can really be innovative and think about things differently, which is hard to do when you're having success. But we're going to have to really establish some of our kind of core values again, about who we are, what makes us successful, and, and what we really need to think about as we, as we move forward. You know, presentations like this remind me of the work that's been done for many years to get to the point where we are. So, thank you, Andy.
Thank you.
So, sorry, do you have any questions?
No, I'm good.
Thank you very, very much.
My pleasure.
That was great.
Nice job, Andy.
Thank you. Nice job.
A lot of information to think about, for sure.
And now I get to talk about budget a little bit.
Oh, thank you, Matt. Oh, thank you, Matt, you're up.
So, I think we have two slides on budget.
Yep.
Are they on there? Okay.
Okay. You want, you ready for this one?
I'm ready for that one.
Okay.
All right, so what I wanted to do is just really paint a picture. I shared this information with administrative counsel the other day on where we are, and when you think about where we are, why it's so challenging to think about what the next steps might be. So I think to many people's surprise, based with what was on the table a few weeks ago with the Democratic budget that Malloy had proposed, that that went down and a Republican budget kind of won the day at that, at that point. And I wanted to just demonstrate that budget as it stands, although the governor says he will veto it, what it would mean to Simsbury, because it shows the variance of where we are, and I think it's important to understand. So in the Republican budget, it assumes no local responsibility for the teacher pension payments. That was a significant part of the, of Malloy's last budget, not the executive order, but the last budget. It assumes some level of ECS reduction, but not significant as it reincorporates special education grant funding. I don't want to get into particulars of it, but a little bit different than we have it now. Total impact, it would actually be compared to what we budgeted with the Board of Finance in the contingency planning, about 2.3 million more than was budgeted.
For the town and the Board of, and education combined?
Correct. When you look, when you, when you look at, you look at kind of their whole, their whole package, how that sits. So if nothing else, that would put us in a more favorable budget planning position is how I would, how I would look at it.
Some reduction than we anticipated.
Well, no reduction for current year that we're in. And almost a, I don't want to call it a surplus, but based on what we had kind of planned, we had thought we would see some level of reduction when we planned that budget in state aid. The Republican budget would give us no net reduction in state aid.
Would that 2.3 million wind up in a non-lapsing account?
It would not come to us, it would go to, to the town. All right, so I think it would be part of the entire conversation if something more favorable came out of, okay, how do we plan thoughtfully moving, moving forward? The kind of worst-case scenario that's on the table now is the executive order. That is, you know, we're being told will go into effect, go into law on October 1st. So it's important to understand what that could potentially look like, because in that scenario, all of our educational cost share funding, the entire allotment that currently goes to the town, would not be received this year. And that's to the tune of about $6.2 million. The first payment in ECS normally comes from the state in about mid-October. So while you hear people saying 10-1 is the crucial date, you hear a little bit of buzz now, well, we may have a little more time than that, because those payments to towns don't normally occur till mid-October. Our first payment's about one and a half, 1.4 million dollars that goes to the town. In his executive order, it assumes no, no difference in how we kind of get reimbursement for special education, leaves that alone. And the total impact would really be unclear, because when the executive order goes into place, doesn't stay in place, it goes into place until they can approve a state budget. So that's important for us to recognize as well. So we're going to have to see where this goes, but you can see the quandary of the variance of the things that are at the, at this point when they're negotiating. Your flat funding, basically have a flat-funded scenario versus a local reduction of $6.2 million. So in those reductions that are in the executive order to communities like ours, Glastonbury, West Hartford, $25 million, those aren't scenarios, they're, they're hard scenarios to think through in terms of how you would react and what that process would look like. I still believe that the way we moved out the referendum date, as it was a painstaking process for all of us, but it allowed time for the boards to, to talk about reductions at that point, talk about trying to be as responsible as we could be at that point, and build a contingency plan. So this would still be a devastating scenario for us, because it would be several million dollars over any contingency plan that we had. So...
If it lasted a whole year.
Correct. So that's important to understand. While this date looms, it does not mean if 10-1 hits and we do not have a budget, that that is our lot for the entire year. And I think it's important to understand, because much like when districts went through the budget planning process this past year, you saw people react very differently, right? You saw some radical things done, and you saw some thoughts that were a little more conservative in terms of how districts planned. So I think it's important to understand that. When the time comes, I think that three-board meeting will be crucial. The Board of Finance is planning on meeting Thursday, it's a regularly scheduled meeting. My understanding is that it will not be a three-board meeting, because we do not have new information to react to at this time. I will firm that up.
Take that off our calendar.
I will firm that up tomorrow, but it appears that way. You know, absence of anything new, you're looking at these scenarios. So I think...
Can I just ask?
Yes.
In your last bullet there, you said, would October ECS payment be lost? So my cure, that is what I was thinking, is if they adopt a budget, say, in November, are they going to retro October ECS payments, or they, we have no idea?
It would depend what that budget number is, right? It would all depend if, if that mediated budget has Simsbury seeing less educational cost share funding. I believe that's a pretty strong possibility, that in communities like ours, whatever the end result is, it's less cost share money than we have now. You know, they're creating a new formula, it seems to be a major focus. I think the Republican philosophy is, let's try to hold that harmless for a year while they really create the new cost share formula. So I think it's just a different, you know, there are different philosophies out there right now, but a major swing in the variance. Burke and I met, we, we met as a cabinet, we met with our administrators, we felt that it was prudent at this point with the uncertainty, that we really take a look, and I had sent a memo out to the board that went out to all staff to inform them of essentially a spending freeze on non-essential things. So a lot more conversation before purchases take place, non-personnel items, really being thoughtful with the philosophy of, what can we move off a month, what can we move off two months in case this scenario hits, to see what kind of dollars can be saved in the short term. Felt like that was a responsible move. We've gotten a very reasonable reaction from our administrative team and in the buildings, when people understand what's going on. So I thought to be proactive there, to be able to talk to the Board of Finance about that when we do come to the table, I thought was important. All right?
That freeze was to, intended to delay commitments, not to eliminate them.
Right, so we're not canceling year-long commitments, but if we...
It's going to delay.
You know, there are some things, for example, in professional development that we do internally, where we may use substitutes to cover, that we're going to delay at this time.
Got it.